Good evening, everyone. I call this May 28th, 2024 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. As we all know, we had a passing of Mayor Joe Craig in Los Rancho. So for our moment of silence before the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to have a moment of silence for Mayor Joe Craig. Thank you. And please stand and Janet Sayers, my friend and member of our advisor board for the libraries, will come up and lead us in the pledge.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, announcements or changes to the agenda. Madam County Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. There's one, the Mental Health Awareness Month to be added to the agenda as item four E under proclamation and a vote is required for the change. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I move approval of the agenda with one change. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. And we move on to proclamations. Item A, Michael Cooper Day, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know Michael Cooper ate in the House today, but we want to recognize Michael Cooper for those of you who are my age. You remember who Michael Cooper is. I think anybody who's a little younger don't remember him, but let me remind you who Michael Cooper is. So this is a proclamation coming from all of Burnley County Board of Commissioners. Whereas Michael Cooper played for the University of New Mexico Lobo's basketball team from 1976 to 1978. And whereas during his career as a UNM Lobo, Cooper was a first-team All-Western Athletic Conference selection in both seasons and earned first-team All-America honors in 1977 and '78 after leading the Lobos to a 24-4 record and a WAC championship. And whereas Cooper was drafted to play for the Los Angeles Lakers in 1978 and stayed with the team for the entirety of his professional career. And whereas while playing for the Lakers, Michael Cooper was a five-time NBA champion, the NBA Defensive Player of the Year, and was named to eight NBA All-Defensive Teams. And whereas, following his retirement in 1991, Cooper entered the coaching ranks where he worked for more than three decades. And whereas during his career as coach, Michael Cooper earned the WNBA Coach of the Year title in 2000 and led the Los Angeles Sparks to back-to-back WNBA titles. He also coached for the Denver Nuggets and head coached for the Albuquerque Thunderbirds and the head coach of the USC Women's Basketball Program and assisted head coach of the men's basketball at Cal State Los Angeles. And whereas in 2022, Michael Cooper was elected to the Naismith Memorial Basketball Hall of Fame Class of 2024 and will be enshrined on August 17th, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burnley County Board of Commissioners hereby recognize and proclaim May 28th as Michael Cooper Day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's hear it for the Cooper. Item B, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And do we have county staff here for this acknowledgement? Looks like we do, and they're coming down. So this is an acknowledgement for the delivery of the Burnley County Emergency Rental Assistance Program. It was definitely a team effort, and we've got several employees here, but there were many more employees involved, and I will acknowledge them. The team which executed delivery of Burnley County's Emergency Rental Assistance Program as part of the federal COVID relief funding from the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, and American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, Burnley County was awarded a total of $17,413,121 for its relief of emergency needs for tenants, also known as rent. The assistance program to help households that were unable to pay rent and utilities due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Burnley County provided assistance for past due rent and/or utilities for tenants renting in the unincorporated areas within Burnley County. Over the span of the program, the rent program also worked alongside the metropolitan courts and provided housing stability services. Burnley County's Emergency Rental Assistance Program began in April 2021 and was fully expended by April 2024. During this time, 2,898 households in the unincorporated Burnley County were provided assistance to alleviate rent and/or utility in arrears and prevent eviction. There were numerous individuals who worked together to make this program a success and make a difference in the lives of so many people who faced housing uncertainty. They include the contracted workers who processed applications, answered phone calls and emails, met with tenants and landlords, conducted outreach events, sat in eviction court cases, provided housing stability resources, liaised with utility companies, and they are Sue Andres, Juliana Baca, Hina Desai, Nathaniel Doucet, Kevin Farmer, Gina Gallegos, Linda Hubley, Naleli Lewis, Vera McKnight, James Mejida, Celeste Nunez Salcido, Jose Soldana, Rosanna Suazo, Andrea Valladolid Ochoa. And the staff who responded to inquiries, met with tenants and landlords, provided training and support to processors, processed payments, did monthly, quarterly, and closeout reporting to the U.S. Treasury. They are Rogette Gallegos, Soulema Lenz, Carolyn Tobias, Sue Ann Chavez, Meiling Armijo, Daniel Beeman, Kristen Fox, Marcos Gonzalez. The county's accounts payable team, who issued 5,706 checks for payments to landlords, tenants, and utilities. That's right. ARPA finance team and Burnco's customer service staff, who greeted and directed walk-in inquiries. Thank you to our community partners, GMC Consultants, Southwest Education Partners for Training and Crossroads for Women, who provided housing stability support services in the community. It is with pride and appreciation that the Burnley County Board of Commissioners recognizes this extensive team for executing the delivery of the Burnley County Emergency Rental Assistance Program funding to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson and the Commission. We greatly appreciate your acknowledgement of this, Item B. Couldn't have done this without the leadership with County Manager Shirley Reagan for basically just saying like, guess what? We got all this money, but guess what? You can get us out to the community, and we said, let's go. Let's do this. And we definitely since 2020, this is one of five programs that we have done, and we definitely see it's before ever changed. This team's forever changed with the faces that we run into every day when people that really desperately needed the help were able to get it and grateful that we were able to give it to them. And we couldn't do this without a team, without all of the team that's here and all of the many Burnco team members that are not here today. That we could not have done it without them, and they are the real heroes that made these programs work. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item C, County Clerk, Madam Stover.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I read the acknowledgement, I sure want to say thank you to APS. This is such a neat, neat thing we did. I've been your county clerk for seven and a half years. This is my eighth year. From the first year I came in here, we started working with APS to do things in the schools with the students, and they have stepped up every single time and helped us. We've had such a delightful time working with them and through them. And this acknowledgement is for the I Voted sticker contest we did this year. We did it from kindergarten through 12th grade, and the arts teachers all helped with this. There were 287 applications that came in for these I Voted stickers. So you'll see a bunch of them up here in the front, and I'll read this acknowledgement in a moment. But these kids worked real hard on getting these I Voted stickers in. And when you go to the polls this November to vote, you will get original art from an APS student that says, "I voted." So I really think that that's a cool thing. So here we go. Acknowledging the Burnley County Clerk Linda Stover, in collaboration with Albuquerque Public Schools, hosted the I Voted sticker contest, an innovative project designed to foster civic engagement among youth through artistic expression, and acknowledging all Albuquerque Public Schools visual arts students were invited to design stickers for the 2024 general election, and acknowledging over 200 designs were submitted by visual arts students for kindergarten to 12th grade, and acknowledging 12 finalists were chosen whose designs will be featured on stickers that will be distributed to Burnley County voters as they cast their vote in the 2024 election. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burnley County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the artists chosen for the I Voted stickers for their creative contribution to civil engagement in Burnley County, done this 28th day of May, 2024, in Burnley County, state of New Mexico. And I'd like to invite the people that are here, the students that did these pictures and things, to come forward, please, so we can acknowledge you. I'll come down there with you, your parents, too. Come on.
These are a few of our artists, and they really deserve your applause. There's hope for the future, folks, right here. Yeah. Parents, come and get in the hooker, too.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your creativity. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Move on to proclamation, let's see, 4D, Public Works Division, Elias Archuleta.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, Elias Archuleta, Deputy County Manager for Public Works. Here tonight to present an acknowledgement of National Public Works Week, which was last week, unfortunately, fell in an off week of commission meetings. But we did have a few events, one of which was a roadshow here on Wednesday morning where our three departments and our various sections brought out displays, both stuff to interact with, like backhoe, and we had our remote control mower and some other things for everybody to kind of play with. But we did have booths up for all of our departments showcasing what we do for the county, because a lot of what we do falls into the background. We're the ones that come in. We make your workday safe. We make it comfortable, but you don't often see us. So that was one of the big things we wanted to do on the roadshow. And then on Thursday for lunch, our division management hosted a barbecue for all of our employees where we had horseshoe competition, a cornhole competition, and just kind of was a nice day for everybody to kind of relax, take a little bit of a long lunch, cook burgers and hot dogs for everybody. So with that, I'd like to read the acknowledgement. The acknowledgement, National Public Works Week. National Public Works Week is May 19th through May 25th, 2024. And this year's theme is advancing quality of life for all. Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Burnley County. These infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the Public Works professionals, who are equipment operators, tradesmen, mechanics, inspectors, lab professionals, engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. It is in the public's interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in Burnley County to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. The year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And we pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Thank you, DCM.
Thank you. And we have a couple of our directors here. Unfortunately, Brian's extended his long weekend and is still up in Springer. But as I mentioned, a lot of what goes on is handled quietly in the back, and we have two of our facilities maintenance guys that make sure everything goes smoothly and stays nice and cool here with us. But thank you.
County Manager has a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say how very proud I am of the work that you guys do, the exceptional work. And when I attended the event last week, it was just real evident on all the skill that you all have to have to operate your heavy equipment. And the booths were outstanding. And again, thank you for keeping our buildings safe and comfortable and functional. You know, you all, I've always said, we're really nothing without our staff because you all make it happen. So thank you so much for everything you do.
Any other comments? Thank you. Item four E, Mental Health Awareness Month, Commissioner Barboah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am honored today to really push for this May's Mental Health Awareness Month. If folks know, it has been the biggest thing that I've been concerned with as a commissioner. And today I just wanted to recognize and also take the opportunity through public process to really call out and hopefully make more people aware of 988 and the services available to community for free 24 hours a day. So I'll read this proclamation and maybe talk a little bit more about 988. So the Board of Burnley County Commissioners, sponsored by all commissioners, whereas nearly one in five adults and one in five adolescents in the United States lives with a mental health illness, and whereas mental health impacts a person's emotional, social, environmental, financial, and overall well-being with significant disparities among racially and ethically diverse communities, and whereas suicide is now the second-leading cause of death for 15- to 24-year-olds, with teenagers experiencing 17.3% increase in the use of anxiety medications since 2010. And whereas one-third of the United States population lives in a county designated as a mental health professional shortage area, and whereas an estimated 44% of residents detained in jails are suffering from a mental illness, often with co-occurring substance use disorders, and whereas Burnley County and all counties serve as a safety net for residents in need, first responders, and operator of crisis lines, public hospitals, and detention centers. And whereas Burnley County continues to develop behavioral health programs and facilities to help people stay out of jail and avoid crisis by offering mental health and substance use disorder treatment, and whereas the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline plays an important role in behavioral health assistance and suicide prevention by providing free, private, and confidential emotional, mental, or alcohol and drug use support by phone, text, or chat 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas those who contact 988 are connected with a skilled, compassionate professional who can relate to their situation and offer them private, nonjudgmental, one-on-one support. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners, the governing body of the county of Burnley, supports bringing awareness to mental health and that the month of May, 2024, is proclaimed as Mental Health Awareness Month, done this 28th day of May, 2024, in Burnley County, state of New Mexico. I just wanted to close by saying 988 is a great addition for our community and for giving 24 hours access. And I just wanted to make sure that in this public process opportunity, we mention it. And we'll mention it a little bit later, too, in our behavioral health ordinance. But just May's Mental Health Awareness, please continue to spread the word about 988.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So important. Before we move on to public comment, I have two announcements about our closed meeting that was held today. I offer the following statement regarding the closed litigation meeting held Tuesday, May 28th, at 2:30 PM. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held on May 28th, 2024, were discussed at that closed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement, and it will become part of the minutes of this meeting.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Yes.
A second statement. I move that the Burnley County Attorney and County Manager be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in the closed meeting held on Tuesday, May 28th, 2024, within the parameters set by this commission to include matters related to McLendon. Does that need a motion as well, Juliana? And it's been moved and seconded? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all. Now we move on to public comment. Each person will have two minutes, and you will be alerted about your remaining time. When your time is called, your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you are speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. To maintain order and decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect, we ask for everyone to adhere to the two-minute time limit. Thank you. Juliana, can you please read the names of the commenters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have eight speakers this evening, all in person. We'll start off with Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Adam Harper, followed by Dr. Herado Cionello.
Don Schrader, I'm a registered Democrat. I plan to vote in the June 4th New Mexico primary uncommitted for president. Many thousands of us Democrats are voting uncommitted in primary elections in several states. We damn Biden sending billions of dollars of U.S. weapons to Israel to make homeless injure and murder hundreds of thousands of Palestinians in Gaza and the West Bank. I strongly compliment thousands of Jews in the United States who publicly condemn Israel's massive atrocities against the Palestinians in Gaza and the West Bank. For 76 years, since 1948, U.S. federal income tax dollars have bought the tanks, helicopters, bulldozers, missiles the Israeli military has used to terrorize, cripple, paralyze, murder, imprison, and make homeless Palestinian people. The revenge mass murder of Israelis by Hamas, October 7th last year, was evil. It triggered hell for the Palestinian people. Israel's revenge mass murder of Palestinians was evil. It caused millions worldwide to fear and hate the U.S. and Israeli governments more. Wars of revenge are not the answer for Hamas, Israel, or any nation.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Adam Harper, followed by Herado Cionello, followed by Terry Slater.
Good evening, Madam Chair and County Commissioners. Dr. Herado Cionello, Alternative Health Doctor and Minister. I just wanted to follow up what I didn't finish concerning Palestine and Israel crisis that Commissioner Levis and also a previous speaker spoke about a few weeks ago. And I was offended by his statement. With due respect, we are all entitled to our opinion and thank God for our U.S. Constitution so that we can all voice our First Amendment. so that we can all voice our First Amendment. That said, I have to agree to disagree with your view. Why is that? Because I have facts and friends there and have been in Holy Land with my bride to celebrate our 25th wedding anniversary and interview few Israelis who are Jews and Muslims from Palestine who sought faith, family and freedom. I had a privilege to speak with a hotel manager who's from Palestine and asked why he's in Israel. His response was freedom and opportunity for his family in which he didn't have in Palestine, and I can relate to that. Now, did you know four Filipinos killed in an October 7 Hamas attack? And Israel government promised lifetime aid to their bereaved families. They were there to work in agricultural land, not only to help feed Israelis but also feed Palestinian refugees. Israel is facilitating massive amounts of humanitarian assistance to Gaza such as food, water, medicine, fuel and shelter supplies. Also, do you know of any nation that would drop leaflets from an airplane to warn the Palestinians that idea of dropping leaflets interrupt or telling them to evacuate immediately? None, except Israel who believes in faith, family and freedom like USA. Please look at the facts very carefully and perhaps go visit Israel yourself. You'd be surprised and welcome there with respect like a family. The Bible says if we bless Israel, we will bless. If you curse, Israel will be cursed. And did you know USA have been blessed by God because we stand with Israel?
Thank you.
The Alpha God's side. Thank you.
Terry Slater, followed by Ernest Zereta, followed by Tanya Mullen.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you. I have with me my colleague Fernando Ortega, who's in support of these comments as well. And I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Terry Slater, a public health, local community health leader and expert here who's worked in communities for about 25 years alongside my colleagues many in this room. I'm trained as an epidemiologist and a community health planner. And what that means is that I'm telling you nothing you don't know. Epidemiology is the science of population health. And we have diagnosed serious structural problems in our urban core for the last 25, 30 years. We all see it every day, problems in housing provider shortages, access to basic needs and systems. Today, in support of the Behavioral Health Ordinance, because it is the first time in our urban region in history that we will have the opportunity to fix this structural challenge. Let me tell you a little bit about why I know that. Every other city our size in the country has a local health planning structure. Usually this is called a local health department or a local health board. Our city and state offer what is known as a centralized health department. That structure is insufficient in planning for the health and social needs of its populations in growing urban areas because it is focused on the state's health and especially the health of the counties that have very few resources and a different population needs than we have. So the BHO gives us a chance for this structure to arise, and I hope that you'll support it. I think my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ernest Zereta, followed by Tanya Mullen, followed by Janet Sayers.
Good evening, Madam Chair and County Commissioners. I'm Ernest Zereta residing in Bernalillo County. Yesterday was Memorial Day, which honored the courageous United States soldiers, sailors, airmen, coast guardsmen, Marines and first responders who made the ultimate sacrifice defending our nation's freedom and security. Are you willing to make the same ultimate sacrifice, defending our county and New Mexico freedom and security? In the comfort of our liberty, it's often easy to overlook the sacrifices made by countless Americans who laid down their lives defending it. Truly, we can never repay our fallen heroes, but we can strive to live in a way that honors their sacrifice by upholding the values, principles, faith, family and freedom that make our great republic worth their defending. Let us also never take for granted that there are families missing their loved ones so that we can live with all the great privileges we are blessed with as U.S. citizens. That said, have you and Sheriff Allen any plan of action about getting rid of sanctuary and catch and release policies? Due to the border crisis, New Mexico is officially the number one most dangerous state in America according to a ranking by U.S. News and World Report, resulting in increased sex slavery, drug trafficking and therefore crimes. The root is therefore sanctuary and catch and release policies. Thank you and may God give you wisdom that he will bless our county and New Mexico. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here in support of the Behavioral Health Ordinance as a nurse of 20 years and a member of the substance abuse recovery community. I want to thank the members of this board who've shown an ongoing commitment to addressing the root cause and underlying issues that are most troubling in our community. In 2023, the point in time count reported that around 2,500 unhoused persons and 1,000 unsheltered persons, and of those, 8% were veterans, 50% had serious mental illness and 45% were adults with substance use disorder. It stands to reason then that ensuring low adverse childhood events and that our county has exceptional services for mental and behavioral health and substance abuse treatment would drastically reduce the long-term societal and monetary impact on local communities and governments. It's unlikely that the $8 million currently budgeted by the city of Albuquerque on efforts with the unhoused is actually reflective of the true cost. Beyond the fiscal impact in our community, the proposed ordinance will surely improve the quality of life issues for our unhoused and housed neighbors. Long-term comprehensive services for substance abuse recovery, behavioral health, mental health are vital to improving outcomes. Long-term supportive housing, intensive medication monitoring, case management services, mandatory participation and supportive services as appropriate, employment supports and in some cases, permanent supportive housing are all necessary planks in the bridge to success we're building.
Thank you.
Janet Sayers, followed by Mary Ingham.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Excuse me, Madam Chair, members of the commission. So I'm going to be wearing about five different hats tonight. And hat number one is of being a proud graduate of Del Norte High School. And while the Vanderlip family is here, I was in class number one. And Aubrey, would you stand up again? Aubrey will be in class number 60, the class of 2025. And next year, I want to invite all the county commissioners to participate with us in Del Norte High School having its 60th birthday. Oh, thanks. And I checked the maps and I'm glad to say everybody, but including Commissioner Kazada, four of you actually have schools that are in your commission districts. And I'm sure Commissioner Kazada, you must have families that where the kids attend Del Norte High School. We'll find out. Anyway, I'm going to leave these for you that we celebrate our 60th birthday. But the other hat I wanted to wear tonight is on behalf of Historic Fairview Cemetery. I want to thank you again for the sponsorship of the $300,000 to help us renovate the veteran sections of that cemetery. I want to thank Commissioner Barboia for coming out on a very hot afternoon and representing the commission yesterday. I also, on behalf of the Historical Society of New Mexico, want to thank Commissioner Baca for supporting our conference that took place at the end of April. We had almost 300 people from around the state come and learn about the New Mexico history. And then lastly, as a resident of District 5, I just want to, and driving home last night, going up Central all the way from Historic Fairview, I just urge the commission to work with the city, the state, UNM, because it was a very sad drive up Central, just seeing people that were obviously in a state of crises along Central for almost five miles. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ingham.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, everybody. The man who spoke earlier, I was going to talk about Veterans Day, I mean Memorial Day, sorry, but he did very well with that. So I'll go on to the other part that I was going to say. I just think we need to continue with teaching our children about that tradition of what Memorial Day actually means. I think it's become a picnic or it's become a trip to the lake or things like that. And I think we really need to concentrate and make sure everybody knows what that meant and what it means at this day and also how people have fought for our freedom and liberty. So I attended a Memorial Day service yesterday and was reminded of an unseen need by many families in New Mexico. I'm a pediatric physical therapist retired from Cary Tingley Hospital. There was a little boy with autism. His dad was serving there, passing out the brochures. The little boy kind of got loose and he was moving around and dad was having a real hard time kind of catching him and keeping him safe. Everyone there was very kind to him. But it really brought to mind the families from all over the state that I have dealt with all these years with autism, with other concerns. And I think we as a society have kind of put them in the back burner. We don't think in the time of COVID, many of these children and adults were receiving services at school, therapy services and adult daycare and you know, whatever things that people with developmental disabilities might need. And those were all shut down and the families were devastated by that. I think we really need to concentrate some of our efforts on that population as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ingham.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. So we move on to item six, approval of our consent agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for 6A, B, C, E, F and G?
Yes, ma'am. 6A is AR2024-59. 6B is AR2024-6D. C is FR2024-61. E is AR2024-62. F is AR2024-63. And G is AR2024-64.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public. Therefore, I move to approve the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you. We move on to item seven, adoption of ordinances. Item A, Behavioral Health Ordinance.
Kind of a privilege, Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Barboia.
Thank you so much. For all the folks that came out tonight, I really appreciate the public comment. I am very excited about this ordinance. In April, when we first introduced this ordinance and we said we wanted to make sure we got it out to public comment, I'm very proud of how much we've been able to get it out there. And you'll see that we listened. There's substantial changes to the ordinance, all that we took from the lot, so much, I'm going to name out all the public comment we got, including support from staff and comments and feedback from staff and our very own Deputy County Manager of Behavioral Health, Mr. Wayne Lindstrom. For example, we added 988 and the critical structure that really takes a structure for Bernalillo County beyond politics, right? I'm grateful for everyone that has given their time to influence this ordinance over the 30-day-plus comment period. We had a public provider meeting on May 15th at the International District Library with over 60 people in attendance. Folks gave written, oral, online suggestions, edits and comments. We held a public community meeting on May 22nd at La Mesa Presbyterian with over 30 people in attendance who also provided written and oral feedback. Online, there were over 80 comments to the ordinance and a form that we had sent out for public. In addition, we sent in, that's where many of the comments came back, we held a meeting for open opportunity and edits with our executive staff, our public safety and behavioral health initiative staff. We held a meeting with Bernalillo County Behavioral Health Initiative Steering Committee members, some of which are here today. We shared it with the Albuquerque-Bernalillo County Government Commission. We held the whole meeting where we reviewed it together, includes Albuquerque, Albuquerque City, Bernalillo County and APS members. We sent it to the Addiction Treatment Advisory Board, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, the Homeless Coordinating Council, our new Deputy County Manager of Behavioral Health, Dr. Wayne Lindstrom, as I mentioned, Albuquerque Community Safety, the Bernalillo County Sheriff's Department, as well as sending out on many list serves and public media releases and social media. We received over 80 comments on that public forum. And just on Friday, we both published the original draft and the new draft with the red line version so folks could see the changes. I felt so super confident about this policy now that so many folks have been able to give input. We've listened and as you'll see, those changes have been there. So I wanted to actually, because there's substantial changes, I wanted to hold off and extend public comment for another three weeks to the last meeting in June, June 25th, Bernalillo County Commission meeting. We wanted to do that so that with those substantial changes, we can get a fiscal impact report, we can make sure that folks are able to digest, see those changes. And again, of course, weigh in. That's the point of public comment and that's how I feel we make solid public policy. So we want the public to feel really good and confident as I do. We want the ability to get a fiscal report and make sure that our technical language, because like even on the ordinance tonight, it states that we're voting on the original version, which we obviously are not because we've made substantial changes based on your all's public comment. So I'm really excited to pass this and I hope that we have the votes to pass it as folks have weighed in so much. I also want to make sure we get it right. And so we've been waiting for a long time for the structure. Let's make sure, let's spend another three weeks, make sure we get it right. And I want to yield to my co-sponsor, Commissioner Levis, Vice Chair Levis, if he has any comment.
So is that a motion to defer?
Yeah, a motion to hold off and extend public comment to the June 25th, Bernalillo County Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Levis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much to my co-sponsor, Commissioner Barboia. She has just been an absolute, just a tremendous leader on this issue since the moment that I joined the commission and even before that, watching her in the community, watching her advocacy on this. And it's just been really an incredible privilege to work with her on this ordinance from, you know, from our meetings, sitting together over breakfast, talking about these issues and coming up with language and looking at the past work that's been done on this, you know, the draft, strategic plans and the gap analysis and you know, all the work that's been done. And she's just been an incredible leader. And one of the things I want to really drive home here is the public input because I've been to a lot of public meetings, you know, campaigns and being in office where, you know, unfortunately, many times you have more staff people in the room than you do community members. And those are important meetings too. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that, but the meetings that we held, particularly the Provider Summit and the meeting in the International District, we had robust community engagement. And I've never actually really seen that happen before. It's a very rare thing. It's a genuine thing. And we had some amazing people that helped us facilitate that, Mr. Terry and Ms. Leah Steimel, that were amazing facilitators, helping drive the conversation, make it productive. And it was just incredible to see the community come out. And I think it's also illustrative of how important this issue is to the community because the community shows up when something drives it to show up, right? As we heard, driving up Central, right? We know that the issue is apparent, it's acute, and it's not just on Central, it's on San Mateo, it's on Coors, it's on even Paseo, it's everywhere. on San Mateo, it's on Coors, it's on even Paseo, it's everywhere. And so I think that that's a part of the reason why the community came out. But I think the other part is really the organizing and just the incredible pulse that Commissioner Barboa has on this issue and on the community and where they're at on this issue. So I think that this is the right move to give this a couple more weeks, because the changes were so substantial. You know, I'm a big advocate of getting things done, like let's move forward when we can move forward. I think we absolutely could tonight, I think this is ready for prime time, but giving it that little bit of extra time, this is too important. I mean, this has been around now for 10 years, and we've had basically very limited guardrails on it, not this ordinance, but the Behavioral Health Initiative. Very limited guardrails, very limited legislative framework. And this is a huge change, as we heard, you know, this really institutes what is much more similar to what other large metropolitan areas have in the Behavioral Health Authority that's proposed. So this is a big change, and big changes, we've got to be careful, you know, we've got to take our time, we've got to make sure that we have that kind of consensus and alignment. And that's really been our goal from day one, is consensus. And these community meetings, when we've heard issues, you know, the next question is always, how do we fix that? How do we do that? What, you know, when there's a problem presented, it's always been, how do we fix that? How do we change that? How do we make that part of this organization as much as possible? So I think this is the right move. The last thing I want to say is I want to give a huge shout out to Dr. Wayne Lindstrom, our newest Deputy County Manager, and just incredible leadership. We've had the great conversations, and he has just dove into this frankly, in a way that's just really impressed me. And, you know, makes it very clear that I think that, kudos to our county manager for bringing him on board, excellent leader, somebody that absolutely knows and understands this space. And I think every contribution he made to this ordinance made it stronger, better, something that's going to serve us as a community for, frankly, for generations forward, because that's what this is all about. I think right now, we could turn over the reins to Dr. Lindstrom, and we might be all right without this. But he's not going to be here forever, none of us are going to be here forever. And this is about that generational change and making sure that we have a structure, a system in place that serves our community regardless of who's in charge up here, out there. And this, I think, really sets the pathway forward to do that. So I just want to commend again the leadership of my fellow commissioner and the leadership of the community, the people that came out and gave us the great ideas that we've been able to integrate into this. So I'm really looking forward to the end of June to be able to have more conversations about this between now and then, and hopefully pass this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank again the folks that came out and participated in this on all these nights, when you come on your own time. Again, tonight, I see Tanya Mullin, I know Janice Edda, so many of the folks that have been, that work directly with our families and know the impact that this, that change can make. I just want to thank and appreciate everybody of those. This does not mean anything bad, this means good, we'll have more time, our communities deserve it. We are developing a whole structure for a Division of Behavioral Health, so it's important, and we got to get it right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so the motion is to extend this ordinance to the June 25th meeting, and I'm going to be voting in favor of this. I think this is, really speaks to the fact that with the leadership of my colleagues and working with the community, we're continuing to listen to get this right. And I think that this is a good thing, we're going in a very, very positive direction, and it's a sea change. And again, also, I will echo, thank you to Dr. Lindstrom, our new DCM. We are hoping for really great things, and we will continue to work with the community on this. So with that, we need a vote on the extension to the 25th of June. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you. Item 7B, Economic Development. Madam Clerk, can you please issue an ordinance number?
Yes ma'am, ordinance 2024-13.
And we have Director Marcos Gonzalez.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, the Economic Development Staff requests adoption of the ordinance enacting a improvement special assessment program previously named as CPACE in Burnley County. This program will allow owners of agriculture, commercial, industrial, and certain multifamily residential properties to obtain affordable financing for qualifying improvements, including energy efficiency, water conservation, renewable energy, resiliency measures through the payment of the special assessment on the properties. And just for clarification, this program will be managed by the State Economic Development Office, and will have a limited role with the program applicants. Stand for any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve this. And I just want to highlight that it's just an incentive program, which is an excellent way to motivate the community. And this is for business owners, community members who may want to improve their properties, their agriculture properties, potentially residential, commercial properties, for more sustainable, green measures, water sustainability. And this is a great avenue to financially support them, so that they can find favorable terms to pursue this. So it's a way we can just be involved in the community to incentivize the community in a positive way.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question, how do I do this at my home? How do I get that to that level, you know, I mean? Probably four times a week, somebody knocks on my door, selling me solar. How does this change that? And how can residents get involved in moving into the future when it comes to clean energy?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Casada, so currently it is just for commercial entities. So this was done by the legislature, so this is something we would have to work with the legislature to then extend it to residents to be able to do.
So right now, it's just for commercial properties?
Just commercial properties, or in certain multifamily properties as well. So apartments for people, not for the apartment, not for the person that's renting the apartment, but for the owner that owns the apartment complex. We probably have about three apartment complexes that are calling Carolyn like every day, asking like, did you guys pass it yet? Did you guys pass it yet? But this is something that we can, Mr. County Attorney has really helped the legislature craft a lot of legislation that went into this, so it's something that I can speak to him about. And we can work with our legislators to see if they're willing to push it on to other residents as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barboa?
Yeah, just a quick question, this sounds exciting for, even for our commercial and multifamily residential properties. Does, it says here, the payment of special assessment on their properties. So can you, do you mind explaining how it works if you're a commercial or agriculture, includes agricultural properties? That's exciting.
Correct, so Madam Chair and Commissioner Barboa, so it's an extra fee, they'll be paying essentially like on their mortgage payment for the property, so it's a special permit piece that'll be collected and then use that, basically an extra fee they're using on their property taxes to be able to pay the mortgage, the mortgage payment for the renewable item. So that's how it's, the lien allows them to go on to the other property itself.
For the, for the special?
For whatever type of investment that's happening towards, if they want new windows, heat pumps for water heaters, or solar panels or items like that. Be able to put that special assessment on to the property piece, and then you essentially use the property as an extra piece of collateral for paying for that renewable energy item.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's like, if I'm a commercial property owner, I apply for this, I get a little bit taken out from my, that's added to my mortgage, and that creates almost like a savings for those to make those purchases.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, essentially yes. So it's essentially a little bit like what we see for individuals that live like in the pit district, where there's that extra little, uh, cost that's on their property taxes that goes for the infrastructure, so it's very similar to that.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is really exciting, this is a really cool program. Have any other counties, municipalities in the state implemented this yet?
Commissioner, Madam Chair and Commissioner Olivas will have to follow up with you on that and get with the state to see where we're at. We were the, probably Santa Fe County, because they had a CPACE program before us, but we were ahead of the game with having our ordinance as well, but we'll follow up with you and get you that.
Thank you. I really support this, I think it's a good thing, and, you know, in the end, it'll make a lot of our buildings more efficient and more climate resilient in the community. Thank you.
I move approval? Or it's been moved and seconded, sorry, before we call the vote, apologize, I needed to call that this is a public hearing. However, I understand that no one has signed up to speak. And so with that, there's, it's been moved and seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Item C, Planning and Development Services. Shirley Reagan and Director Ham.
Oh, one more, I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong order.
You can do mine.
No, no, no. I just got a call that my sprinkler is running all over the neighborhood, that's why I'm pissed off, sorry.
Director Ham, Planning Development.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. Nicholas Ham, Director of County's Planning and Development Services. Tonight, here to introduce Burnley County Building Code update. This is a motion to introduce and approve for publication, proposed changes to the county's adopted building code. That's Chapter 10 of the county's Code of Ordinances. Before I get into sort of the meat of this, and I'll be brief, I did just want to take a moment to recognize the Building Department and specifically the county's certified building official, Ms. Reyes, she's standing here behind me. She is the best in the state, and I say that with, I mean that with wholeheartedly. The Building Department, they issue about 4,000 permits annually, they conduct about 6,100 inspections, they add millions of dollars in value to the county's property values. She's so good at being a building official that for about 18 months, ending last year, she served as not only the county's building official, but the city of Albuquerque's building official simultaneously, while they were trying to sort out some staffing issues that they had. So Dawn is amazing, I would not be as good at running my department without people like her to help me to do that. So for the business of this evening, periodically, the State of New Mexico Construction Industries Division updates their set of codes relevant for construction. They recently did that process as they normally do. So this proposed motion would move the county in line with the State of New Mexico's regulations. It would include the 2021 ICC Commercial and Residential Building Codes, the 2021 ICC Energy Code, the 2023 National Electric Code, and the 2021 IATMO Plumbing and Mechanical Codes. These updates would allow the county to permit and certify our structures as both energy efficient and safe, using the most currently adopted codes in the state of New Mexico. With that, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'll stand for any questions.
So this is a motion to introduce and approve for publication?
Yes ma'am.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, or questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I noticed in the red line version here, it looks like these haven't been updated since about 2008, some of them 2007, 2009, but around that sort of timeframe, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, you are correct. We're a little behind the curve, as opposed to where I would have liked to be, but this will bring us up to contemporary standards, and I assure you, as long as Dawn and I are around, we're going to keep doing this on a regular basis.
And will this put us on the same code as the city of Albuquerque, the state of New Mexico, and the county, will we all three be in alignment?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, state of New Mexico for certain, I defer to Dawn on the city question, she's shaking her head, yes. Yes, statewide.
I think that's fantastic, it's a great thing for our contractors, so that everybody knows that they're working off the same piece of paper, and, you know, they're all reading the same thing, so it's a very smart move. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, just want to add one more thing, as part of this, we are not asking to increase our fee schedule. We see that as a mechanism to encourage folks to enter the permit process and to keep our process affordable. So while we'd like to update our codes, we don't want to do anything with our fees. And with that, stand for questions.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Dawn. Agenda item eight, adoption of resolution, budget FY24 one-time appropriation. Madam Clerk, will you please issue a resolution number?
Yes ma'am, FR 2024-65.
And now, DCM Reagan.
Okay, let's try this again. Good evening, my name is Shirley Reagan, Deputy County Manager of Finance. I am here to present the FY24 one-time appropriations. As you recall, during our budget preparation for FY25-26, we had several workshops with you all, and we discussed the recurring budget that was going to take place and be in place July 1, 2024, for fiscal '25. In those conversations, there were some items that were deemed one-time in nature, and we explained those to you, and we said, we committed to coming back to you to bring forth those and seek your approval, so that the departments could move forward with those one-time dollars and projects come July 1, 2024. So the motions before you are to approve financial resolution 2024-65 for the purpose of appropriating earned unbudgeted revenue to support one-time appropriations for fiscal year 2024 totaling $24,875,802, supported by Attachment A. And the second motion is to authorize the county manager or designate pursuant to administrative resolution 2023-77 to seek reimbursement to the General Fund for any project or initiative funded by the General Fund that subsequently receives funding in whole or in part from an alternative funding source such as another agency, bond, proceeds, or grants. If the amount exceeds the county manager's authority, the item will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. I stand for questions.
Any questions, Ms. Reagan?
I move approval?
Second.
And any comments, any? Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out one thing in here that's near and dear to my heart, it's a very small thing, but there's $80,000 in here for additional animal care contract to allow more veterinary services to be provided by our animal care department. Counselor Feeblecorn also fought in the city's budget process to include some more funding for this, so I think there's a concerted effort on both sides, the city and county, to really try and address the pet overpopulation problem through more spay and neuter clinics, but also not just the population issue, but just general care, you know, shock clinics, microchipping. There's, you know, been a lot of service inflation across the board, but, you know, we don't have a lot of veterinarians, so those things have gotten pretty pricey. And for some of our residents, they may not be affordable anymore. So this is a really important commitment to our four-legged friends and others, we do birds and all kinds of other stuff there. So just really excited to support this and see a little bit more help going to that corner of our community.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we're taking a different approach, because it's hard to hire people on since the pandemic, so a lot of people are contracting out their services, so they can make more money that way. But this puts us in the, gives us the opportunity to compete with some of those contracts that are out there and solicit some of that help, much-needed help, so.
Commissioner Barboa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Shirley Reagan. I also just want to say, like, these are ARPA one-time funds, and ARPA stands for America Rescue Plan through COVID, right? And I think no other better agree with all the things that we're putting forward to this, thank you for the process. But I just also want to name the VIC, the Veterans Integration Center. I'm so honored to be able to support that. What better those one-time dollars going to supporting our veterans? I was able to take a tour at the almost completed Veterans Integration Center, it's going to be placed in the Kirtland Edition, which is a traditional African-American neighborhood meant to house veteran, African-American veterans and military. And I am just really proud of the space, they're being innovative, they are creating programming that's going to cover families. We've, at least a decade, been hearing from folks, especially veterans, that leaving their families, being separated from their families, or separated from their service animals, has been something that they're not willing to do. And guess what? The VIC is meeting that need, they listened as well, they're meeting the need. And they are developing a program that is going to be for whole families, include service animal dogs, they're going to have a beautiful landscape. And part I just want to make sure we say, we have that, this funding to finish the first phase. I am excited to think about the second phase, because that's I am excited to think about the second phase because that community, like I said, our Kirtland Traditional Community really deserves a beautiful structure and building in its neighborhood. So I'm committed to seeing it all the way through and just thankful for these ARPA dollars, and I think this is a great way for them to go. So thank you again.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barbo, this particular item here is not the ARPA funding. Just wanted to let you know that. But you, you're right, we have done a lot with the ARPA funding, and we'll continue to do our part in that and support items.
Okay, sorry. Thank you for that. And some of this is for the VIC, is that not?
For $400,000 to finish Phase One.
To finish Phase One.
Yes, in the, yeah.
One time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I like to echo that. I think it's really important to complete a very important project with the Veterans Integration Center, and I look forward to finding that money to complete Phase Two as well.
Madam Chair, are we now talking about item C?
Item A.
We're still on item A?
I'm sorry. We did jump.
We jumped.
Okay.
Thank you, though. I won't talk that much then when we get to that.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
We're voting in favor of item A, right? Yes, aye.
And that passes. Thank you. Sorry for my confusion.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item B. Office of Criminal Justice and Behavioral Health Initiatives.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Pam Acosta. I'm accompanied by Deputy County Manager Wayne Lindstrom. And tonight, we're bringing before your request to approve a cash transfer from the Behavioral Health Initiative to the Community Assistance and Supports Team, also known as CAST, managed by the Burnley County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $450,000 to support the operation and expansion of the social work and victim advocacy program within BCSO. The 450 was previously approved by the commission, and the money was originally transferred to BHI. However, we wish to transfer the money directly to BCSO, to the CAST program, who are managing that program. It should also be noted, which is really important, that the CAST program has also applied for a federal grant to sustain the program. The motions before you are to approve a cash transfer from BHI to BCSO CAST in the amount of 450, and to approve a financial resolution in order to transfer the funds. And I, and we stand for any questions.
Before we do that, Madam Clerk, can you please issue a resolution number?
Yes, ma'am. FR 2024-66.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Olivas.
Just a little discussion on this. So is this sort of a technical cleanup? Because I know that last year, we sort of appropriated this funding with sort of the asterix that they might get a grant. I know that didn't happen. So is this more of a technical thing, or are we sort of now renewing this for a second year?
No. Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, it is a technical cleanup, just to transfer the funds, a line item transferred directly to them.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Barbo.
I just want to make one quick comment. I've been very thankful for Sheriff Allen's leadership. I've been able to meet with him, and, you know, he's really determined to make sure that our law enforcement has the tools needed for behavioral health so that communities have the full options in front of them before they just decide to arrest. So I think this has been a sea change of itself within our law enforcement, and I'm so grateful and, you know, thankful that we're giving the tools needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like I'm up again.
Yes, Ms. Acosta.
Okay, again, I'm Pam Acosta, Senior Manager with the Behavioral Health Initiative, accompanied by DCM Wayne Lindstrom and Michael Barndollar. And in the audience, I also have representatives from the New Mexico Veterans Integration, Integration. I have the Board Chairman Brock Wolf and the Project Architect Rick Bennett in the audience. Michael Barndollar is our Steering Committee Vice Chair, who also looked at this project. In December of 202, so what I'm presenting to you two today is a proposal for the Veterans Integration Center of New Mexico, Transitional Living Services, which seeks $400,000 in non-recurring capital and startup dollars to continue the support of the development and construction of the Veterans Transitional Living Campus. In December of 2022, the Board of County Commissioners approved financial, financial resolution appropriating $3.5 million of fund balance from the Behavioral Health Gross Receipts to the Veterans Integration Center for capital and startup to build the Transitional Living Campus. The three-acre campus, which is currently under construction, will be home to 42 veteran units and six additional beds for unhoused veterans and their families. In August of 2023, due to inflation and cost increases post-pandemic, the Board of County Commissioners approved a budget increase in the amount of $666,153. And this makes a total of four point, I'm sorry, $4,166,135 that the county has provided. And that, that was approved. The VIC has secured a total of $8,401,897 through the BHI Grocery Seats Tax, a federal grant, and a grant through the city of Albuquerque. Today, the New Mexico VICs is, is facing additional def, an additional deficit due to change orders from the contractor and unexpected upcharge from PNM, and are seeking an additional $400,000 in one-time funding. BHI has identified funding within our current FY24 budget to cover this increase, this budget increase request. The agenda item was heard through the Housing Subcommittee and the Steering Committee and recommended to move forward for, to the, to the commission. The motion before you are as follows, on paper, but we will be requesting a floor amendment. Approval of $400,000 in non-recurring capital and startup dollars to support the continued development of the Veterans Integration Center, thus authorizing the county manager, manager to execute all associated, associated agreements and the adoption of a financial resolution appropriating $400,000 of fund balance from the Behavioral Health Gross, Grocery Seats Tax. However, we kindly request a floor amendment to remove motion number three, as we have identified the funding within BHI's current budget. And we, at this time, we stand for any questions.
Any questions or clarification? Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So on this item, there was mention in the, in the write-up about the, the Phase Two. And am I, so is the total cost of Phase Two 2.4 million, or was the request to the county 2.4 million?
Madam Chair and Mr. Vice Chair, the total request for the budget increase and Phase Two is 2.9 million.
Okay, but, and obviously, we're only considering the, the current phase with this appropriation here.
Is for Phase One.
Is the funding requested for Phase Two the entire amount needed? Or is there additional capital that will need to be raised in addition to, if we were to fulfill that request at a later date, let's say?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm kind of not really on this item, but it was on, in the packet on this item, so.
Sure. Madam Chair and Commissioner Olivas. The 2.5, we actually have a, a quote from our current general contractor, Janes, which is 2.6, but there's a contingency of about 225,000. So there's really not much can happen with the little square 8,000, you know, square foot building like what happened on Phase One with all the, the problems. So the 2.5, to answer your question, is a complete package to finish Phase Two, which is all the wraparound services.
Okay, very good. I was just curious, sort of thinking ahead, as to whether that was something we were going to need to then go to the legislature and get matched, or bring the city in, and, you know, kind of the whole thing that we did on the first phase, but it sounds like that's.
Well, it is shovel-ready.
Okay.
And we, we talked to Shirley a little bit about ARPA. We, we've talked to a couple of commissions about getting it as quick as it can because we have a lot of momentum. We have a lot of family coming in off the streets. And we're, we're fractured over at, you know, another location, and the, the wraparound service is down at Central. So it, it is, it would be so convenient for the veterans, all veterans, for us to get that wraparound building built because it's actually going to be attached to the existing building we're building. It's, it's got, you know, libraries for kids. I mean, we're, we're really planning this out because there are a lot of kids coming in. We got five, a family of five kids that just came in a couple of weeks ago, you know, with a spouse and the veteran. So we would love to just explore something that could give us shovel-ready money for the, for the sake of the project.
Thank you for talking me through that and, so that, but the $400,000 that we're considering now, we'll finish Phase One, change orders, all that kind of thing, and, and then we'll have future conversations about, about Phase Two, which definitely sounds like is very much needed.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I think it's important to understand that there is also been other funds that have been sought for Phase Two. And I believe there's an ask before the state. I don't know if you want to clarify where that stands at the current time.
That's a little bit of a sticky wicket. There's a constitutional problem. We got, we got a capital outlay. It's not an official outlay from the governor's office, but it's, it's a, it's a good faith offer of $2 million, and we appropriated $400,000 through Burnco as a fiscal agent for capital outlay for Phase Two. However, the lawyers and everybody just said there's really a challenge trying to get the VIC the money without Burnco owning the building. And we have a lot of lawyers working on it. I think there's perhaps a rap, a workaround was mentioned, but I'm not a legal person. We haven't got back together, so there's a lot of questions on the capital outlay. ARPA, I'm not too sure if there's funds available, but this is a shovel-ready. We met with Shirley quite a bit on the phone about ARPA. If that would be something we could, you know, implement right away, we could, we could certainly obligate ourselves. I think the deadline is the end of the year, but we could, we could build it by the end of the year.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, I don't know, we're working with Amy Whitfield at the governor's office, so there's 2.5 out of the governor's capital money for housing. So we're working with some of our procurement issues and our bond counsel as well to get over that sticky wicket, as we said. But we think that we can get that over. We have a meeting scheduled in the coming weeks with Amy to kind of follow up on this 2.5 million. And we'll update everybody once we hear back from them.
Thank you.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is that there is, for, for today, we're voting on the $400,000 to complete Phase One, and that's the important thing here. But I will add that I think that the Phase Two, as it's been explained to me, is ready to go, is very much needed, and we will work together with our partners, whether it's at the state or locally, to investigate that and bring it back before the commission at, at that time. So I think what we're being asked for here is a floor amendment, Ms. Acosta, to remove the, the third item or the, of the financial, FR. Help me through the language.
Help me, please.
Yeah, floor amendment to remove motion number three, as we have identified the funds through BHI in our current FY24 budget.
Okay, and I hear a motion from Commissioner Barbo, and I'll second that. So I'll vote on the amendment, please.
Aye.
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 Thank you. And Michael Barndollar, you had a.
Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you. As Pam mentioned, I'm the chair of the Housing Subcommittee, as you all know, and the vice chair of the Steering Committee. And, and just as a reminder, the Phase Two and any phase beyond that still has to go through our process. We'll take a close look at it. We, at the Housing Subcommittee, we delayed discussion on Phase Two at our meeting this month, so did not move to the Steering Committee. So when we meet again, I don't recall the specific date, when we meet again in June, we'll take a really close look. And hopefully, at that point, they could come back to us with, and Deputy County Manager Lindstrom will come back to us with all the information about other potential funding sources so that when we come to you in June, whenever that may be, we'll have a formula all laid out, how much money actually needs to come from the county at that point. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I have the answers then. Thank you. So I move approval, item one and item two. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
And that passes. Okay. Thank you for walking us through that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I make a statement?
Yes, Mr. Becker.
Commissioner. We've been working on this project for almost three years, and I'm very proud to announce that we will be open our new facility to our veterans on September 1st of this year.
That's great.
This project has generated a great collaboration between several government entities. The VA, the state, the city, the Congress, and of course, the county. The county, I want to thank the commission on behalf of the VIC Board and staff for believing in our mission. There is no doubt that without the county's support, this project would not have been possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Appreciate it.
Move on to item nine on the agenda approvals, county manager and county attorney.
Yeah, Mr. Robertson will be presenting that item.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, Daniel Robertson, Assistant County Attorney, thank you. This item is the proposed compromise to avoid a contempt motion for, for invigilation of check-out audit number two in the McLendon Settlement Agreement. As discussed earlier today in our closed litigation session.
I think your microphone is this one.
Sorry, thank you. As discussed earlier today in our closed litigation session, there are 10 items that we are asking for approval for the county attorney and the county manager to sign in lieu of possible contempt hearings based on the mental health section of the settlement agreement. Those items range from an allocation of funds to help with those suffering from mental health at the MDC, hiring an individual by the name of Ms. Knox to help allocate those funds. She is already doing that in another settlement agreement we had for the mental health domain. She will help identify the issues where those funds would better be served. There are also some items incentivizing or encouraging the commission to continue with efforts with the legislature to help those suffering from mental health at MDC through increases in Medicaid and, and, and other federal resources. In addition to this, there are some additional incentives to revise the Mental Health Corrective Action Plan, which Ms. Knox is working on, and that is also part of this agreement, and help improve the detoxification procedures at MDC. That is the, the grand scope of the items. There were some amendments mentioned at the closed litigation meeting. I did highlight them in this document. To be specific, under 2B, the county and the plaintiff intervenors' counsel will confer with Ms. Knox and jointly select a different project manager if she chooses not to continue the role. And on that section B, we changed the year from 2024 to 2025, as that was a typo, as well as added a year for the county to work with the CJCC to create a plan by December 31st of this year to help with the stepping up initiative. And finally, on number eight, the fiscal year mistakenly still said 2024, those were changed to 2025. We're asking for the county commission to approve this plan in lieu of motions for contempt as the items were discussed in the closed litigation.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Any questions?
Do we need to, are we voting on the amendment or on the whole package?
I would request the, the whole package with the amendments.
With the amendments.
I move the whole package with amendments.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Madam Chair, my apologies. So, yeah, let's vote on the amendments since it differs from the published version, and then vote as amended. Thank you.
I move to amend the document with the amendments presented by Daniel Robertson.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and this is on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all.
And now, as the amended version, we will vote on, on that.
I move approval with amendments.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Benson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, Fire and Rescue Intergovernmental Agreement. Chief Greg Pettis.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. What you have before you is a longstanding, solid agreement with the Villageless Ranchos. We've been servicing Villageless Ranchos for the last 15 years. It's part of how you inherited me back in 2009. So good things, according to myself, of course. We've been doing some really great work for the Villageless Ranchos at a very, very, very reasonable price. There has not been any increase to this agreement up until 2020. Um, there has not been any increase to this agreement, uh, up until 2019. And when we did increase, it was only by 3%. Right now, we are entering into an agreement, or we've entered into an agreement with Sandy Pueblo for the same type service at a cost of 2.2 million. Uh, this agreement with Village of Los ranchos sits at 500,000. So we needed to go through and do an increase. Also, not to mention the growth that has occurred within the Village of Los ranchos and the strain that just the facility on the Fourth and Osuna Corner, uh, will place on the fire department once that is fully operational, if that, if that does come to pass. So what we are asking, or what has gone before the Village of, uh, Los ranchos trustees and has already been signed and agreed to, um, is an increase of 300,000, uh, this first year, and then another 100,000 the next two years to bring us to a million dollar fee, uh, by 2027 fiscal year, actually, 2028 fiscal year. And so I stand for any questions that you all may have.
I move approval.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Casada first. Um, any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item nine, see Human Resources, Director Pettis.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Bernadette Pettis, Human Resources Director. I'm here tonight seeking commission approval of the negotiated changes to the AFSMI Council 182499 Collective Bargaining Agreement. Negotiations between Burnleyo County and AFSMI Council 18 Local 2499 commenced on April 2nd, 2024, and we reached tentative agreement on April 26th, 2024. On May 14th, 2024, the union ratified the contract with a majority of votes, 160 to 12. This is a two-year contract expiring on June 30 of 2026, and multiple articles were negotiated to include economics. I would like to highlight the changes made to Article 22, where wages are being increased by 10% for a corrections officer, year two through year four, corrections officer, five years plus, sergeants and lieutenants. I would like to recognize the management negotiating team, Chief Negotiator Dina Holcomb, DCM Shirley Reagan, Deputy Warden of Security Raina McCann, Interim Major of Operations James Brandon, DCM and Fire Chief Greg Pettis, Employee and Labor Relations Manager Dawn Hill, and myself. I would also like to thank the county manager for her continued support while we go through these negotiations. And I would also like to thank the AFSMI Council 18 Local 2499 Union Negotiating Team members for their collaboration in reaching this agreement. There are representatives here from, from AFSMI Council 18 Local 2499 in attendance in the event that they have anything in addition to add. Otherwise, I stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casada.
I move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Levis.
I just wanted to take, uh, take a moment here to thank our corrections professionals in the room, um, for, for the great work that they do on behalf of our entire community, citizens of the county, citizens of the city. Uh, it's an important law enforcement function. It's part of, uh, you know, the system that we, we have, that we need, that, that keeps us safe and, um, you know, that hopefully helps try to get people on a, on a better path in their lives. So I just want to thank you all for what you do. You are just as important as every firefighter, every police officer, sheriff's deputy. Um, it, it takes the entire group working together, the entire community working together, to, to make our community work and hopefully make it a safer, better place to live. So thank you for what you do and, uh, so proud to support this agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, um, let's see, where are we? Nine D, Pam Acosta.
Hello again. Um, good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. Again, I'm Pam Acosta, for the record, Senior Manager with the Behavioral Health Initiative, and I'm accompanied by Deputy County Manager Lin, Wayne Lindstrom. And we are here tonight bringing before you a request to authorize the county manager to award and enter into a contract with a local community provider resulting from an RFP solicitation for school-based mobile health clinic operations and providers, um, under the Behavioral Health Initiative. The motions before you are to authorize the county manager to award agreements for the operations of school-based mobile health clinics, authorize the county manager to execute and approve, approve agreements and award vendors, and authorize the county manager to approve future amendments and/or subsequent agreements in accordance with AR 2023 dash 77. And we stand for any questions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casada.
Yeah, before, I, I, I move for approval. Uh, I just want to say, this has been a long time coming for me. It was my number one priority in leaving the APS School Board to come to be a county commissioner. Um, we looked at that behavioral health, uh, money, um, that, um, that the commission had bravely, uh, taken to the voters and, and passed. And we saw that, you know, uh, there was big gaps in wraparound services. We talked about that earlier, right? Uh, with our veterans, um, wraparound services, how important they are. Um, I really felt that, you know, if our number one goal was now, um, early childhood education, that we were gonna, you know, reach into the coffers up at the state to fund early childhood education. And I also felt that if we believe that kids learn at an early age, then we also have to believe that, you know, the adverse childhood experience affects children at that same early age. And so, uh, you can't do one without the other. You can't provide education without providing the wraparound services. So that's, was my goal. And I get it, right? I get the frustration. I get, I get the bureaucracy. I get that COVID hit us. I get that, you know, things went up in price. Uh, we just talked about that a couple of times during this meeting, that things went up in price. But I just kind of want to talk about, you know, uh, you know, that we're at a point where now we're getting the provider, uh, and that we're gonna get it going to an agreement. I mean, the two mobile units, you know, will be ready here in September before I leave. So I get to at least ride on one and, and go to, you know, uh, go to a, a school, uh, or, you know, I, I just want everybody to know that just, you know, we're gonna use them at schools because we just don't have the capacity to build a school-based health center on every campus, which would have been my ultimate dream, that, that we provide those services at every school because we know that there's children at every single school, whether they're a title one or not, um, you know, deserve those types of services. Uh, the community deserves those types of services. Uh, I, I, I think that people should know that this is providing services to the whole community, not just to children, that even teachers have, you know, a, a, an ability, uh, to go in and be checked, to be seen. Um, so this is a game changer, I think, for, for all of us. And I just want to thank you and, and, and you, uh, our new, um, Deputy County Manager for Behavioral Health, Wayne, uh, we talked and, and you, and you're a true believer in school-based health centers. And so, um, it was just an honor for us to have that quick conversation about how important it was and that now we're at the beginning of something. Um, and I want to publicly thank, uh, Congresswoman Stansberry for giving me the money to buy a third one. I know it's gonna be down the road, but it's, but it's on its way. And we're gonna start off with two, but hopefully in the future, um, I think if our dream come true, that, you know, we have one at every school without having to put in capital money to build them on every campus. Or maybe in the future, we find the, the, the capacity to build them on every campus. But with this as a game chamber, not just for APS, but we could also provide this at charter schools and other areas in the community that we think, uh, this, this need is, is, you know, heck, at, 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 at the tiny home village. I mean, there's other places where this can really, uh, make a difference at some time during the week. And we're hopeful that we really get the, the use out of it. And, um, I'm just excited, uh, that I made it, that I stayed here long enough for this to happen. And so I just want to thank staff for believing in this project when I brought it forward and following through with it and making it happen, and the support of this commission who supported it from, from the beginning, uh, and to, and to get in us here. So I really, uh, would appreciate, um, support of this, um, item. Thank you, Madam Chair. I second Madam Chair.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? Commissioner Barbo.
Uh, you said that the RFP has already been issued. Like, do we have a provider?
So we have a provider selected. Um, I'm not able to release that just yet. Once this is approved, I believe that we are able. I, I don't know them personally. I wasn't on a RFP panel, but yes. We do have a provider selected.
For both?
For both units, yes. And, um, Madam Chair and, um, Commissioner Barbo, I wanted to add, um, some good news. We have identified the four schools. Um, it consists of one elementary school and three junior high schools or middle schools. And so we've identified those in addition to community centers that are surrounding those schools, to which, uh, in the four quadrants, the school-based mobile health clinics will also serve. So, and, and I believe two charter schools have also been identified.
Thank you. I may, Madam Chair, just also ask. So, thank you. Glad we got a provider. I think, just, I guess one last comment is that it's really important, too, that I think this is creative, that we have a mobile unit that can move around. It's also important because the schools have really increased security. So originally, school-based health centers were formed so that anyone can go to them. So I remember my son, who went to Wilson Middle School. If my daughter got sick, I could, even though she was in elementary school, I could take her to get seen that same day, or I could be seen as a parent of a student there. And, and now that the schools have increased all this security and you have to do all this stuff, we can actually, those mobile units will be outside of the gated, you know, school and have, and folks can still have access to that without having to, like, go through the school's security and gun detection, all those things. So I just, I'm really excited about these getting in motion September. I'm gonna hold folks to this. Is that what we're hearing?
You and me both.
So September is what we're guessing. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what they've promised.
I'm really excited about our families getting access.
And Madam Chair, I'm sorry, can I do a follow-up?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I just have a follow-up, though. Um, so, you know, we're, we're, we're moving forward with this new, um, uh, Behavioral Health, um, Authority Ordinance. Um, I just want to know that, cause I did get 800,000 reoccurring appropriation to this. Um, that, this doesn't affect that, correct?
Madam Chair, Mr. Vice, uh, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioner Bar, um, Levis. I'm sorry, Casada. No, it should not impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Levis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, one question on this, so it's, it's called a school-based mobile health center, but it's funded with behavioral health monies. Are they gonna be doing both mental health services and physical health services? Or how is the delineation on that work?
Um, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, yes. They will be providing both behavioral health services and, um, medical care.
Awesome. That's good to hear because I, I, you know, in this case, I think we would actually be, since it's funded with behavioral health, we would probably be prioritizing treatment of the, the mind, the, the behavioral health conditions. But so often, we make the opposite separation where it's, we just treat the body and we treat the mind as something completely separate. Uh, but, you know, understanding that, you know, our biology, that the two are integrally linked and have to be part of the same conversation and the same treatments often, or, or at least considered at the same time. So that's great. Um, the other question I had is just on the, the budget going forward, kind of the recurring. So one of the things in here that was noted in the impact report is that originally this was budgeted at $800,000 a year recurring, and now it's projected at, is it 2.4? That's for all three units?
Yes. Madam Chair and Mr. Vice Chair, yes, that's for all three units.
So, s- since the third unit isn't online yet, this is really only for the two units at this point?
At this point, yes.
And then that other 800,000 is essentially, uh, vacancy savings or? But this appropriates the full 2.4?
Yes. It should. Um, and, and the way I believe that we structured it in our budget, it should.
Okay. And this is, this is recurring funding, so this is not something that we're, we're taking out of our one-time pot. This is something that will be built in going forward.
Yes. Madam, Madam Chair and Mr. Vice Chair, yes.
Okay. Great. I think that answers all my questions. Thank you.
Madam Chair, uh, just one second.
That's all right.
Um, Madam Chair, if I might also, I wanted to, to point out that while we're waiting for the units to become available, so something that you mentioned, Mr. Vice Chair, um, we want to, we're working with Albuquerque Public Schools to also have those providers, the provider that we've selected, work within the brick and mortar, or brick, or within the school, to provide those services ahead of the mobile units because we want to, we want to get started. So as soon as a contract is awarded, we're gonna start working that out on where they would go and start those services there.
Great.
Dr. Lindstrom.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I think we're well positioned, um, to, uh, number one, leverage Medicaid. So if you look at 70 cents to 90 cents on every dollar, uh, can potentially reimburse much of the services that we've been delivering. And there's potential, even with some of our contracted services as well, um, that's gonna free up a lot of our county funds. And when that's taken in conjunction with the opioid settlement funds on top of that, and I've asked that we consider an endowment, which is allowed under the settlement agreement, uh, where we can take a portion of those funds, put it in an endowment, and potentially then have a path towards sustainability. So whatever we build over the next decade with these dollars, we can have a principal and live off the dividend to continue those services beyond the, the decade, if you will. So, uh, like I said, I think we're well positioned to further build and expand without necessarily, uh, new county monies per se.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Oh, who seconded that? Did we get that?
I'll second it.
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Benson. Thank you. And that passes. Thank you both very much. Item 10, Discussion, Fire and Rescue, Chief Pettis.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, before you is our fiscal year 23, actual calendar year 23, uh, annual report, which is part of our accreditation process. That was emailed to each of you individually about a month and a half ago to review. And I want to thank each of you who took time to provide positive comments and feedback to the hard work that, uh, the men and women have put in, in the department this last year, and specifically, uh, the lady to the side of me, Captain Rochelle Ordolano, who is our, is basically our accreditation manager. She puts that document together for all of you and for the department every year. Um, so huge credit goes to her. Really, we just stand before you with any questions that you may have on the actual accreditation document that, uh, either myself or Captain Ordolano might be able to answer for you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Congratulations.
That's an easy one. Okay. Thank you very much. Did you want to say anything?
No, just thank you guys so much. I appreciate everything.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Item 10B, Public Works Division. Burnleyo County Clean Team Update.
I'm told I can plug this in somehow, so let me see if it works. Stop it right there. Okay. Go back to the beginning. All right. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, uh, Madam County Manager, my name is Antonio Haddamian. I'm the Director of Operations and Maintenance. Thank you for allowing us to speak to you and present to you a brief, uh, summary of what our clean team has done in the past eight months during, uh, um, of the beginning of this operation. Uh, we will be presenting some pictures, as you can see up there, uh, in a, in some video of what we've been doing while I present to you, uh, with some information, um, regarding our efforts. The recently re- we organized Burnco Clean Section under Operations and Maintenance has been making its mark on the quality of life of Burnleyo County residents. Our section has been hard at work providing services to an ever-expanding mission, providing its citizens with clean and safe environment. Since the time of its implementation, the number of constituent complaints and feedback have been dramatically reduced due to proactive approach of the county's maintenance needs. We have assigned two-to-three man crews to the North Valley, South Valley, West Side, East Mountains, Trails within the roadway right-of-way and illegal dumping route. Our graffiti team also has been reorganized and aggressively remediates graffiti throughout the county. Public Works has partnered with, with AMAFCA to remove unsightly tagging from Arroyo's and diversion channels, helping to keep the community clean and beautiful. We, we also have worked with the City of Albuquerque on multiple sites that straddle city and county jurisdictions that are in the process of formalizing a MOU[1794.23] county jurisdictions that are in the process of formalizing a MOU to help the regular cleanup efforts during a section of said, along a section of Central that is currently maintained by the city and NMDOT. The solid waste ordinance is now being enforced by this team, addressing illegal dumping sites on vacant properties and roadway rights-of-way throughout the county, county's unincorporated area, removing items such as large tire dump sites, construction debris, boats, trash, and even a more than uh, and much more that have an effect on the environment and quality of life. Currently, we're standing at 30 violations that have either been issued or are in process of being remediated, of which two properties have, we have leaned and remediated by county staff, 10 have been closed and uh in compliance per the ordinance, and the remainder are still in process. Thanks to the support of the county manager, distinguished county commissioners and Burnley County staff, we have been able to hire much-needed staff, uh, purchase a tire cutter, tractors and vehicles to our crew, for our crews to provide these services. Our current team is comprised of two program coordinators, eight operators and four maintenance workers, and one community service lead position. Our vacancy rate is 60%, however, we are working with HR staff to ensure that we are recruiting at the highest level possible to get these positions filled. Although our vacancy rate is high, we have done great things with the staff we we do have. With the addition of the tire cutter, Burnco Clean has an increased, uh, has seen an increase of 346% more tires collected than in previous years. These tires are more than, uh, uh, from our uh continuous efforts through multiple programs that Public Works provides to the public by means of community cleanups, illegal dumping remediation right-of-way, weed and litter maintenance, and vacant land code enforcement. We project that the end of this year, these efforts will save the county more than $24,000 in disposal fees of this one-class waste alone. In addition, tire collection is now offered at every community event, a cleanup event throughout the county to make disposal easier and more accessible to all citizens. Burnco Clean Division projects that we will clean up more than 450 tons of debris from illegal dumping, community cleanups and rights-of-way of maintenance. This is a 52% increase from the previous year. The Clean Team also teamed up with a line management colleagues to help take over maintenance of multi-purpose trails, road maintenance, road medians and road roadway landscaping that are within the roadway right-of-way. And this all-inclusive approach allows our teams to dedicate staff to specific areas and to allow for more frequent maintenance of our corridors. Hyperdermic needle collection is up 236% and several weapons have been recovered and turned into the sheriff's office. The future of our, of the Clean Team is bright, is a bright one, which is comprised of extending our footprint of influence to other problem areas within the unincorporated area, as well as increasing our cooperation with the City of Albuquerque and law enforcement to help with the cleanup of problem areas that have been identified by these agencies. We also would like to increase our corporate cooperation with other local agencies to mitigate graffiti, pollution and litter. Education is another component that we would like to incorporate to help the younger generation, influence the older generation to keep our areas clean and beautiful. Our new solid waste service branding will also allow the community to clearly identify our crews uh when we are out in the field mitigating these problem areas. Um, be on the lookout for our new branding in our vehicles. I would also like to extend our thanks to our Deputy County Manager Elias Archuleta for continuously supporting our efforts, as well as the Deputy County Manager Shirley Reagan and her staff uh from the Finance and Budget Office in finding funding to help support our much-needed equipment. Lastly, I'd like to thank uh Mr. Gabriel Viescos, the Solid Waste Manager, and Armando Alpadaca, one of our program coordinators, uh, for their efforts in ensuring that our program is successful and running our day-to-day operations. Their dedication to the success of our program is unmatched, and we have done great things because of their tireless efforts. The Public Works Department looks forward to providing excellent service and a cleaner environment to the community for years to come. I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Casala.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you guys are amazing. The Clean Team helps me tremendously. Um, I have so many problem areas, uh, you know, I mean, I have a monthly meeting on just Pajarito Mesa alone. Uh, just that one part of my district, I have a monthly meeting, and that meeting is about an hour, an hour and a half long, sometimes because we're constantly fighting illegal dumping, tire dumping, concrete, construction dumping, and you guys have stepped up your game since I started here uh in in a big way. Um, I don't think people recognize a lot of the area anymore and how it used to look and what it looks like now. Uh, and through my office, when we reach out to you for responsive, whether it's median, um, weed, weed removal, uh, all the way up to tire removal, mattresses, whatever, your response time has been exemplary exemplary, and I uh want to just thank you from the bottom of my heart for really, really stepping up your game and really being a true champion for the community, and I appreciate you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barbo and Commissioner Benson.
I just want to also thank you, thank you so much for your hard work and um making Burnco beautiful. Um, I absolutely love it, and I, you know, we need it in those areas and our unincorporated areas. I also look forward to a follow-up about the RFP for the essential cleanup that we agreed upon, I know. Um, but thank you for the service that you all provide every day in making Burnco beautiful.
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioner uh Barbo, we did uh meet with the City of Albuquerque, they're gonna provide us with that uh information uh on the cost of that. Um, I believe, they did mention that they did present it to the commission previously. Um, I guess it was a previous commission, um, but and that the price was pretty high. Um, but once we receive that information, we'll provide it to you.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Antonio, you and your team, excellent work. Uh, the number of calls in my district have been going down since I was first elected, uh, and it's the entire district, primarily North Albuquerque Acres and then the West Side over by CNM. And just the tire remediation alone, what a great service with the tire cutter, um, being able to uh take those up so quickly. So thank you so much, and and uh DCM Archuleta as well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I also want to extend my thanks. I mean, this is about keeping Burnley County beautiful, but it's also a public safety issue, as you know, and I hope you guys are out there doing this safely because it's a hard job, and thank you for all that you do, DCM, Archuleta, Antonio. Thank you both as well.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lewis, uh, Vice Chair Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to say thank you to to all of you here today and everybody on your staff that isn't here. Gabe, you do an amazing job at the transfer center, but a lot more than that, right? Uh, with these clean teams. Thank you for supporting my my Earth Day event. We had a really great event, in no small part thanks to to you all and the support that you were able to provide to to the team. Um, but it goes beyond that, and I'm I'm really glad to see that there's pictures of bus stops in your presentation. That's important, you know, those are areas that are that we know are real eyesores, they're they're hard to keep clean. We've had these conversations about what the city has told us about bus stops and the difficulty in keeping those clean. So I'm just really glad to see that that you're, you know, we're stepping up and and helping out where we can. Uh, there's problems all over the county, unincorporated in the city, and um with this kind of stuff, it just doesn't really matter where it's at. It's about cleaning it up and and doing it right, doing it safely, and uh serving our constituents regardless of of which side of that line they live on. So I just really appreciate you all and uh really proud to support this over my my short time here to to be able to support tire cutters, uh, other other things to implement this, and let's keep it going.
Thank you.
Thank you, all three. Great. And now we are at item 11, announcement of the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, zoning meeting at 3:00 PM in these chambers, and then uh Tuesday, also June 11th, the administrative meeting at 5:00 PM here in these commission chambers. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you.